entitled Open Public Meeting Act. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided in the notice of January 28, 2020. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township clerk, sent to Tap into Nutley, advertised in Nutley Sun on February 6, 2020, and posted on the district website. A revised meeting notice was sent out on April 8, 2020, advertising that this meeting was a virtual online meeting. We have the flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty for all. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Kukuzo.
Mr. Cornisella?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Here.
Mr. DeMayo? Mr. DeMayo?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mrs. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Ms. Arrow?
Here.
Mr. Kazinski?
Here. Thank you, participants. Board members, I would ask you, if you can, I know it's difficult. Try to keep your mic off when you are not speaking. It, we know our conversations, it's been difficult to keep this going. We're going to try a little bit harder tonight. Our board attorney has joined us. Scott Everland is here. You might see him, you might not, but he is here, so we'll be talking with him later. There's no correspondence. We'll have the superintendent's report. Dr. Glazer. Okay, Mr. Appleton will move to the...
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody.
One minute, just grab the paperwork, it'll be right here.
All right.
Okay. So, Charlie, maybe you mute for a second. So, I think we have all followed the events of this past week and are very much reminded of the divide that exists in our country and the important job placed on our shoulders to help our students process the world around them. Heard from several families in the last few weeks sharing their stories and frankly, sharing their pain. I've learned something new every single time I've spoken to these families. Please know, I'm listening, we're listening. I think that this is the time where we're going to reflect, where we'll look back. We'll recognize our unconscious bias, examine our fears, and understand better what it means to walk in someone else's shoes. For all of us, I pray for peace, continued peace, and we will all continue to work for change. So, it's clear, we did get a couple of questions through the webmaster, not through our chat, so I want to make sure I answer that. We are restarting all of our programs when we return to school. I think that everyone's aware that we had forums and student groups and a number of projects started. When we restart, we will restart those programs. And in the meantime, we're going to continue to find new ways to infuse culturally responsive instruction throughout our curriculum. I think it bears noting, it was a wonderful sign that I've seen at almost every rally. This is not just a teachable moment, this is a movement. So, for those of you that have reached out, for those of you that have asked questions, again, please know that we hear you and we're listening. Along those same communications lines, the surveys that we've been speaking about, talking about virtual learning have gone out. A survey was given to our staff, to the parents, and to the students in the district, students six to 12, although it's open to anybody who gets some help from their, from their mom, I think, answering the questions. That's a good thing, not a bad thing. Our staff survey asks a lot of questions about our technology, Schoology, the implementation of virtual learning, remote learning, asked some questions about moving forward, the support staff has received and the support they'll continue to need. The parent survey really talks more about how, how this went for their students. Did they, were they able to complete their assignments? Were things clear? Did students have the opportunity to receive support? And was that support, you know, instructional learning support or even social emotional learning support? We're very excited to see those responses to be able to help us move forward. I think that the student surveys I'm most excited about, of course, I want to hear from everybody in the community, but I hear from parents, I hear from staff. Very rarely will hear from student. I think we've only had two or three that I've gotten since we've gone to the remote instruction. So, I'm really very interested to hear how this has gone for them. One of the questions we asked mirrored a question on the New Jersey Department of Education survey that was sent out broadly across the state. And that is, if the governor relaxes the emergency orders, if we're relaxed on the guidelines that are necessary, would you send your child back to school? And what do you think that would look like? Would it be full, you know, back in school instruction, full remote instruction? Probably a hybrid of the two. So, I'm excited to see the answers to those questions. As we get the responses to the survey, we'll also be doing some advisory committees to hear from people, parents, students, board members, staff, community members frankly, to, to hear how this has gone and if, when we come back in the fall if for some reason we have to implement these strategies again, that we'll be ready. I, I've said it before, I'll say it again. All, all of the staff, the teachers, the administrative office that's all working remotely, everybody has done a remarkable, remarkable job over the past couple of months, bringing us up to scale. We were in the second year of a four-year Schoology implementation. We were not introducing parents until next year and, and it's pretty exciting to see how far people have come in the past few months. So, please, when you get your survey link, I encourage you to please, please respond. We do need your answers. And if we call on you to be part of an advisory committee, I hope you'll respond positively and, and come and join us. Speaking of the governor and his reopening plans, kind of threw me a curveball this afternoon, an unexpected immediate change. We'll certainly be responding to that. For the immediate time, we are still having staff come in with a limited capacity into the buildings to finish taking their personal belongings and gathering students' personal belongings. We will continue our plan for curbside pickup and drop off next week, again with smaller capacity so that students can retrieve their personal items. And we'll be moving forward with all of our other celebrations this week. I do want to call your attention tonight. Just in about 20 minutes, we have our scholarship awards happening. That program is going to continue on video and I hope you'll be able to have the opportunity to see all of our scholarship award winners. And if they're, they're somebody you know, congratulate them. I'm going to take this opportunity to congratulate not only all of our scholarship winners tonight, but our World Language Honor Society celebrants and of course, our Class of 2020, who we'll keep celebrating. I have to give a big shout out to our Educational Association of Nutley, our high school staff and administrative team, Mr. Pyro, our student body president Raj, who all came out last Monday and surprised our Class of 2020 with beautiful, beautiful lawn signs on every lawn. Their caps and gowns, their diploma covers and cords so that they could get some pictures going forward. And of course, the wonderful, beautiful lawn display at the high school. So, thank you to all of the people that participated in that, particularly our board member Lisa Dancheck-Martin, Michelle Cristantello, President of the EAN, Holly Jasnowitz, who is the Chair of the Pride Committee and really took upon herself to make sure that this happened for all of our students. So, thank you to them. You, you kicked off our celebrations in June in a big way and in a really beautiful way. So, thank you for that. We also have another question that came into the webmaster, not the chat. Again, I feel a responsibility to answer those so that every voice is heard from the community. We had somebody that wrote to us about the business administrator appointment. They did not see that that appointment happened and asked how that appointment could be rescinded. I just want to thank you for writing your question. We did appoint Mr. Frost on the May 19 Board of Education agenda. He rescinded his appointment on May 25 to stay in his current district. So, therefore, our choice will be to move forward to fill the openings in the business office in a different way. So, again, thank you for your question. If you have an additional question about that, if you've logged on to the meeting, please put your question in the chat and we'll be notified and, and can answer any additional information for you about that. Thank you, everybody, for everything that you're doing. I know that this stays hard as we do virtual and I'm looking forward to getting back to some, some sense of normalcy in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. One question. The sixth graders and above receive that survey?
Yes.
Okay, and then the people, the children in the grammar school, obviously, the parents would work through them to have some kind of a question or answer if they wanted to.
Correct. And it's accessible to everybody.
Got it.
And we're going to have students on the advisory committee from every grade level who want to participate.
Thank you. Dr. App, I'm sorry, Mr. Appleton, are you on? Mr. Parigi, I see you're on. We'll go to you and then when Ed Appleton comes back on, we'll go to him.
Okay. Thank you. Albright Electric started installing the LED lighting in the district. They're currently working at Radcliffe on the exterior lighting and at the high school gym. The Terrafon Press Box Projects bid opening was on Friday, June 5. The custodial staff is working on summer cleaning. The staff continues to maintain social distancing at all times. All staff are required to wear masks at all times. This will be enforced for the safety of all staff. We are, we are getting ready for student pickup of locker items. This will be coordinated with the principals and the superintendent. The Nutley Fire Department started their life safety inspections of the district and will be completed this Thursday. We had a roof leak in our TCU unit five and six at Washington School. Will Scott was called and several representatives were on site in two days to assess the situation. They did find several holes in the roofing membrane. They also assessed the interior damage caused by the water. The floor that was water damaged in units five and six will be replaced. The wall that was sustained water damage will be replaced. The repairs are scheduled for June 10, 2020. That would be tomorrow. I'll have an update after we're completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parigi. Is Ed Appleton back on yet?
I believe so.
Okay, go ahead, Ed, you are on.
Okay, this past week, we completed the application for extraordinary aid in conjunction with the Special Services Department. To give you an idea of the magnitude of this grant, they began compiling a database in the fall. And we just finished it this past week. We are also in the midst of putting together our major federal grant monies in application. Those will have to be completed by the end of, of this month and we anticipate having applications for the board next board meeting. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Ed. Now's the time for committee reports. Even though they were not on our initial agenda, I, I would like to go through them if we could, but if, if you're not prepared for them, it's not an issue. Lisa Dancheck, are you prepared to give us an academic committee report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Sure. The academic committee met on June 3. Dr. Glazer provided an update on plans for facilities, including custodial and maintenance schedules, the plan for student locker and desks to be emptied, curbside pickup of student belongings, funding under the CARES Act for expenditures related to COVID-19, and information on bid opening for replacing the turf and the oval. Dr. Glazer also provided an update on surveys to the parents, students, and staff regarding virtual learning. The survey data is intended to provide feedback and input into our remote learning efforts so far and assist us with planning for the fall. Mr. Banya, Ms. Locanzolo provided information on upcoming summer curriculum projects for ESL, CTE, and library media. The committee engaged in a discussion regarding looking forward and what education might look like in the fall. Various options such as fully in school, fully virtual, or a hybrid of the two were described. The committee also described what physical buildings might look like with sanitizer stations, Plexiglas barriers at, at the office, and social distancing. Dr. Glazer provided information regarding continuing the food services into the summer. The current meal program is set to expire June 30. We have applied for a waiver to continue through August 30. Pomtonian and the Nutley Family Service Bureau will remain partners in this effort. Dr. Glazer gave an update on the new health insurance cards for all employees who are covered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield. The coverage remains the same, but the group number has changed. Dr. Glazer provided an update on the various year-end celebrations. Plans for virtual kindergarten, grade six, grade eight, and high school graduations are complete. Programs will be very special. In addition, she shared information about other virtual celebrations such as World Language Honor Society Scholarship Award Ceremony, which is airing tonight. Dr. Glazer provided further details of the reimagination of the central office, including the updated organizational chart. She has surveyed Essex County districts for salary comparisons. She also provided an update on interviews for the business administrator. Dr. Glazer provided a personnel update and revised information regarding the BA position. Our next committee will be Wednesday, June 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dancheck. Mr. Cornisella, are you prepared to give a report?
I'm always prepared, President, thank you.
I, I know that, thank you.
We, the administrative committee met on June 2. Our discussions included, Dr. Glazer provided an update on plans for facilities, including custodial and maintenance schedules, plan for student lockers and desk, desks to be emptied, as well as curbside pickups for student belongings. Dr. Glazer provided information on the bid openings for replacement of the turf on the oval and alternate bids for the press box. Myself and Dr. Glazer shared that they, that we did not receive the updated long-range facility plan as of that date from DeCaro and Rubino, but we were, we were well aware of the fact that the long-range facility plan was updated to the state. We were just expecting to see that list finalized, so we should be getting it hopefully in the next few days. In addition, a safety and security meeting, as well as a long-range facility plan meeting, will be plans to discuss the use of Alyssa's loss funds. Dr. Glazer provided information regarding funding under the CARES Act for expenditures related to COVID-19. This includes sanitizing, but may also include supplemental services or technology. Dr. Glazer discussed the continuation of food services through the summer. The current waiver is in place until June 30. Dr. Glazer has filed a petition on the Department of Agriculture to allow the district and the family service bureau to continue food distribution through the summer until August 30. Dr. Glazer provided details on the self-help insurance contract and the financial requirements involved. Dr. Glazer provided details on the reimagination of central office, including sharing the draft updated organizational chart. And Dr. Glazer will survey other Essex County districts for salary information to support her recommendations. We were updated on the business administration position and a general discussion of year-end activities and celebrations was held with the committees. There was no legal update. Next meeting for finance will be Tuesday, June 16 at 6:00 PM. That concludes my update.
Thank you very thorough, Mr. Cornisella. Except for the voice, I thought it would be the same as Lisa. Mr. Ferraro, are you prepared to give an update tonight?
Yes, I am, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, so.
The finance committee met on June 2. It was a virtual meeting. Dr. Glazer provided an update on plans for facilities, which included the custodial and maintenance schedules, returning to a full-time on June 8, the plan for student lockers and desks to be emptied, curbside pickup of the student belongings. We discussed the funding under the CARES Act for expenditures related to COVID-19 and we also discussed information regarding the bid opening for replacement of the turf at the oval. Mr. Parigi provided an update on the LED lighting installation. They began at Radcliffe School with the exterior lighting. Mr. Parigi also reported on the turf and the press box bid, which was set to open on June 5. He also shared that the Nutley Fire Department started their life safety inspections at each of our school in the district. Dr. Glazer shared the current meal program, which can, which will continue until the end of June and that she had requested a waiver from the Department of Agriculture to continue feeding all of our Nutley children under the age of 18 through August 30. This will continue to be in partnership with the food service provider Pomtonian and the Nutley Family Service Bureau. Mr. Appleton reviewed tonight's finance resolutions that are on the, our agenda, including acceptance of the Title I, Title II, III, and IV allocations, the IDEA allocations, Perkins allocations, along with the CARES Act funding and our intention to submit grants for that funding. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Appleton also reviewed the resolutions for the health and dental insurance plans. Dr. Glazer provided further details of the reimagination of the central office. And Dr. Glazer provided an update on the BA position. That's all I have for finance. Our next meeting is scheduled for the 16th of June.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Mrs. Arrow, are you, are you able to give us an update on the policy committee?
We didn't have a meeting, so there's no update.
That, that's fine, thank you. I wasn't sure. Thank you very much.
No worries. You're welcome.
We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on resolutions only. Our Board Regulation Number 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone wish to have a, speak to the board now? Ian, are there any comments?
There are currently no comments in the chat.
Okay. Thank you. Lisa and Mrs. Dancheck, will you take academic resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolution number one as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Scolera?
Yes, I was on mute, yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. Mr. Cornisella, will you take administration resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move administration resolution one as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow? Ms. Arrow? Did she say yes?
She did say yes.
Yes. Did you hear me? Yes.
Yes, we have it now, thank you. Will you take finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move finance resolutions 1 through 48 as written.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have a question about resolution number 11, the appointment of the insurance broker. I'd like to know, we've gone out for RFP for a lot of our other positions, but we really haven't gone out for the insurance broker and I was wondering why.
Okay, I believe we did, and I'm not sure, but I believe we did go out for that, not just now, but I think last year we went out for it. I'm not sure about, again, this year. We'll, we'll, we'll open it up for discussion, I guess. I will get back to you with an answer, Lisa.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Scolera?
Ms. Arrow? Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. Mr. Scolera, will you take personnel resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move personnel resolutions 1 and 2 as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes, and Mr. Mr. Riley did come on and say yes.
I did come on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow ten minutes to the... Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Ian, do we have any questions?
There are currently no questions in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Is there any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
So, Mr. President, just a question. I know that...
Yes, sir.
I called you today and multiple calls that I received. Are we discussing graduation enclosed or in open?
My feeling is that the graduation discussion that's been ongoing will continue in committee, which I think you have planned for Thursday morning, correct? That's, that's where the conversation needs to be continued, in my opinion, then brought to the entire board.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
We're, we're, the Board of Education will be discussing, I'm sorry.
Also, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, so we have the Raider Ride that we're setting up. I'd like to make a motion that the board supports this as a function of the district. That's the event we're planning. I don't want to give the date and all that yet, but I'd like to get a, put that as a motion here.
Second motion.
Okay, do we, are we clear what the motion says? The motion is saying that you're looking for the board to be supportive of the...
Raider Ride.
Right, Raider Ride, correct?
That's correct, that it's run by, run by the district.
Madeline, did you understand that?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we, can we have a little explanation as to that, as to, as to what exactly that entails?
Certainly, Mr. Scolera.
Sure, so I received, I'll leave the names, an email today stating that, you know, I've been working on this and they felt that they actually wanted it to be signed by a board member, myself or Kenny, and that not be supported, it should not be a part of the district. So, I am making a motion that is part of our district celebration for the students.
You understand, Mr. Ferraro, or you want to talk about it some more?
I, I'm trying to understand it, so it's, 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 what is it exactly?
So, this is a celebration with vehicles, it's set up, you know, I don't want, well, let's say, so it's a, it's a celebration with the kids, decorate their cars, we're...
uh, well, it's, so it's a, it's a celebration of the kids, decorate their cars, we're going to have a whole, uh, thing led by the police, the fire department, uh, routes are being worked out, a whole bunch of planning with Chief Romolo that I've been involved with, and we're going to be doing this as one of the celebrations for the graduates.
And, and this has been discussed in your graduation committee, for lack of a better term, correct?
That's correct.
I have a question.
Mr. Carnesella.
So, I just, quickly, I'm not, how, why wouldn't this be a, of a, a Board of Education event?
So I received an email, uh, from a, uh, not an administrator, I guess she's an administrator, recommending that it not be, and that, uh, it be supported and run, you know, by the, one of us as a town leader instead of, uh, district.
But we don't, but the reality is, is we don't do anything as an individual on the Board of Education.
Exactly.
We're a unit, and we act as a unit, so I, I, again, I don't understand how there would be any confusion as to why the district would not be representing this event.
I, I don't, Fred, I, I don't, I don't think there's confusion from our side. I think from that committee person, um, seemed to want to put the responsibility someplace else when it's really our responsibility as a board to sanction this Raider Ride, which I think we're in favor of. Um, and Fred is looking to put a resolution through to make it a sponsored effect by the Nutley Board of Education.
By, by the way, Mr. President, may I?
Sure. Mr. Riley?
As, as being a member of that committee with, uh, trustee Schlera, um, this has always been the decision of the Board of Education to address and move forward or not move forward. And this is something, uh, that Mr. Schlera came up with. It's a great idea, and it's a great, uh, event, and I support it, and I support him. And as a board, we should collectively support, um, Mr. Schlera and the event.
And, and I wholeheartedly agree, and I think the entire board agrees, and Fred just wanted to be reassured that the board felt that way. Not speaking for Fred, but I think that's what the feeling was.
Do you want to vote on this?
And let, let any board member, uh, who doesn't want to support it step forward at this point.
Well, I could vote. It's, it's a resolution, so that either it's going to be, uh, unanimous, unanimously approved, I could do that, or I could individually vote like we did for all the other resolutions.
It needs to be individually supported because it's a resolution, and every board member needs to either support it or not support it, and that's why we have discussion for those who don't, don't want to support it, or do want to support it. And again, my, my confusion still rests with the fact that anything that one board member does to move the board forward as a group is considered a unit movement. So again, I'm not sure why we have to individualize a resolution for this particular issue. This was a sitting board purpose, and, and we shouldn't have to resolve this, is my, I guess my point. Let, let's let the board.
I, I would think, I would think that if it's a resolution, Mr. Past President, Mr. Past President, I would think if it's a resolution, that we should go through our normal process of every one of us voting on it.
Yes, I agree.
I think we should defer to Scott right now.
Yeah, I agree. If this is a motion to be a resolution, you should vote on it in the normal course. So i- if Mr. Schlera has made a motion, then we just need a second and take a, a roll call vote.
I already gave a second.
Yeah, we seconded it already.
Okay.
Madeline, Madeline, roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Absolutely.
Mr. Ferrero?
Yes. Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Emphatically, yes.
Mr. Schlera?
Yes.
Miss Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Schlera. Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Any more, any more new business? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 104-12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed to close executive session at this time to discuss personnel and property acquisition. Be it further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists, formal action may be taken. I have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
See you in closed session.
Please follow through to closed session. Thanks. It's an email.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now back in, uh, public session. Mr. President, take it over from here.
We have a resolution that we're waiting to be read by.
I got it.
Board members, South Rar and Frank D'Mayo. I'll take Frank D'Mayo first since you have that resolution. Mr. D'Mayo?
Okay. Hold on, let me, uh, whereas proposals were solicited under the Educational Service Commission of New Jersey Field Direct Purchasing Programs, ESCNJ Contract Number 18/19-55, and whereas the proposal is based on drawings by French and Parelo Associates Construction Plans dated 3/18/2020. Whereas proposals were received dated April 17th, 2020, in the amount of $530,343 by Shaw Contract Flooring Services Incorporated for Synthetic Turf Supply Installation of Allegiant NXT 2.25, and whereas Shaw Contract Flooring Services Incorporated provided an alternate bid for maintenance equipment in the amount of $2,320. And whereas the proposal by Shaw Contract Flooring Services Incorporated DBA Shaw Sports Turf Base in Calhoun, Georgia, 30701, meets all requirements, and whereas the architect recommends the proposal by Shaw Contract Flooring Services Incorporated be accepted, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Board Architect and Board Attorney award of the contracts for supply and installation of synthetic turf to Shaw Contract Flooring Services Incorporated for the amount of $532,663.
Motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, discussion?
Could you repeat that, Frank?
I will, I will take the, uh, the vote. Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mrs. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Schlera?
Yes.
Miss Dancheck?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm missing something that's so funny, but I also vote in favor.
Your hands are going like this.
You had the glare from the screen.
I've been living within the time for 50 years, what can I tell you? All right, Mr. Ferrera, Mr. Ferrera, you have a, a resolution, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, it's Finance Resolution Number 49. Whereas bids were re-advertised May 27, 2020 in the Herald News, and whereas bids were publicly open and read aloud on June 5th, 2020 at 10:00 AM on a live online video stream with architecture and the Nutley Board of Education, and whereas bids were received, follows Dakota Excavating Base Bid 538, base bid plus alternate 561. The Land Tech Group Base Bid 563, base bid plus alternate 583. Flying Against Contracting Group Base Bid 568, 307, base bid and alternate 582, 859. Applied Technologies Base Bid 586, 700, base bid and alternate 617, 400. Whereas the bid of Dakota Excavating of 481 Hackensack Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey is the lowest responsible bidder and meets all requirements, and whereas the architect recommends the approval of the bid of Dakota Excavating Corp., Hackensack, New Jersey, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Board Architect, Board Attorney, award the contract for synthetic turf replacement to Dakota Excavating Corp. for the amount of 530, 538,000.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mrs. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck?
Yes.
Mr. Schlera?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
And I also vote. Thank you very much. Anything else to be talked about tonight in open?
Good night.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President, for setting up such a virtual meeting. Thank you, Scott.